Okay, we'll call to order the city council work meeting for September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I forget, do we, we don't need to approve an agenda or anything. Anyway, you can see the agenda up there on the wall. Over there, over there. First item on the agenda is the post-election review. And we discussed this at a recent past work meeting, and then we had a vote that didn't go anywhere at our last city council meeting. So I asked it to come before us again at this work meeting and at the subsequent city council meeting following this. And I just, I assume that I did not present my case well enough, so my goal is to try to at least clarify what it is. As far as a post-election review, what it is, is we're requesting for the Inoka County canvassing board to choose at random a precinct of the, one of the three precincts in East Bethel for a hand count of the election results. That's what we're requesting. And they don't have to grant it, and they, I'd say it's probably eighty, twenty against us getting it approved anyway. But we just want to at least pass a resolution, request it, and let people know that we're interested in doing that. The first purpose of this is to, number one, confirm via random sampling that machine-reported results correlate with hand-counted results. Okay? Just like a check on the machine. And the machines are just a mirror of whatever they get, you know, garbage in, garbage out. And the second thing is to let all involved in the process know that the residents of East Bethel, East Bethel as a city cares about election integrity, and that we are watching how the, how the process is conducted. Just letting you know that we're, we're paying attention. And as far as the cost of it, if our request were to be granted, and I say it's kind of a lot, long odds, but if it's granted, it would be one precinct, and the cost would be about nine hundred dollars to cover the cost of election judges. Another issue that came up when we discussed this before, which Carrie Frost, who's our city coordinator, administrative coordinator, excuse me, was an issue of how election judges are paid. And in the packet for tonight's city council meeting, I saw what the pay was. It's eleven dollars, eleven fifty, and eleven seventy-five. I mean, you can do substantially better at a McDonald's, you know, and it's for election. So I really think that near, in the near future, we need to revisit that. I would argue that, I looked up the state minimum wage, and that's not really, really relevant here. It's what's the market prevailing minimum wage. And I see fifteen dollars an hour all over the place. I don't know about you guys, but it's like, if you, if you can fog a mirror, you know, with your breath, you can make fifteen dollars an hour. So I, I would think that that would be a pretty close approximation to what the minimum wage is. And, you know, we, we, you know, we're known as being fiscally conservative, all that, but we don't expect people to work for free unless they're on the city council. But I think we can do better than that. I think we owe it to the people who do that work, and it might make it easier to find people to be judges. So anyway, that's, I just wanted to provide that quick overview of what the post-election review is, what the purpose of it is, and what it might cost us. Because I don't think I was clear enough about it before. Anybody have any questions about what I just went through? Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the whispering aspect, excuse me, whispering Aspen contract discussion.
I'll be abstaining from this discussion and any decision-making that comes from it.
All righty.
Mr. Mayor, before us here, I have a contract that was signed, it appears back on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, with a then Firebird Land LLC. And, and I believe that this, this scenario kind of comes up annually, or people question it. And I think that this contract is kind of, I, I think that there is some clarity in this contract, and there's also some, some aspects of it that maybe doesn't speak to other areas that, that should be considered. But at any rate, the contract is here, and the, I think it's now formerly Firebird, now... Remind me.
LLC.
What's that?
Firebird LLC.
Formerly that, now, but...
Now it's BDM.
BDM, that's right, sorry. Drawn a blank.
Okay. Well, I don't know what the BDM is, is that on the sign?
At any rate, so my understanding was that this land, and certainly anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm kind of coming into this as well, kind of trying to put puzzle pieces together. But after speaking with Alex Guggenberger at the county, the, the city evidently owned the land at one point, if it was tax-forfeited, or how that, that came into ownership, and, and there was at a point where the city was looking for an interested party in developing the land, to, to bring development to the city. And, and there were some, going, going back through the meeting minutes and that, there was a lot of discussion back and forth, and, and a couple of iterations of, of the contracts until ultimately this one was signed. And, and then there was some talk of a community center in there, as well as outlots, or the outlots were defined. And, and the city, as I understand, would retain ownership of the, the center and, and those outlots in agreement for, in exchange for selling the land, and then also allowing BDM or Firebird LLC, Firebird Land LLC to use office space in that facility. And I think that's kind of where it's, the contract kind of identified it, and then the question is, is that where the contract is today? Is that the practice of what's going on there today? I think those are some of the issues that are being raised. And so I wanted to, first of all, I think it's, it's, if I can speak freely, I don't think it's, it's beneficial for the community to continually deal with this every year without resolution of some sort. I think that being able to resolve this in whatever form that takes is important. And one of the suggestions that I've, that I've provided is by contacting our county attorney, Brad Johnson. He had indicated that he would not provide a, an opinion on this, but that an opinion is available through the Attorney General, that they provide that service if our attorney was to draft a letter and say, this is the given circumstance. Can you, can you provide an opinion on, on the various disputed matters and kind of detail those out? The Attorney General will do that.
Is there a cost associated with it?
Not in my experience, not in my experience. There would be for our attorney to draft a letter.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So, so then, I think that would bring some closure to this issue, because if and then it comes up next year, and someone says, whoa, wait a minute, how about this? That document can be produced, and, and there's closure again at that point. So whatever that opinion is, I think, short of it being litigated in court, and having a judge determine through a declaratory action, this is what's, you know, was agreed to back then, this is where it stands. Short of that happening, which I think is not necessarily advantageous for either party, that, that this third-party opinion of the, you know, Attorney General might, might be a next, next second step to, to provide enclosure on this. But again, that's, that's you guys' decision, if you want to go down that road, and, and, you know, see if we, you know, if we need to get that sort of letter, that opinion letter, so.
What do you guys think?
Well, it's obviously been out there. I mean, it comes up every year. I don't know enough about the contract, I haven't read it. So I'm not, I can't say one way or another, other than the only thing to do is to have a judge or administrator, whoever, look at it, make a decision.
Judges make the big bucks for determining what is the letter of the law versus what is the intent of the law, or a contract, or whatever. They parse between what it says versus what, what the real agreement was. And it's, it's, in my experience anyway, it's never good to have legal unclaire, unclarity, or whatever, whatever the correct word is. It just doesn't serve any purpose to anybody. So I would, I would be supportive of getting Attorney General to at least look things over and, and sort it out for us.
I think it's necessary, because what has been said out in social media is one thing, what is facts are probably something different. Looking into this, last year when it came up, we were told that there was a contract, the contract's fine, that's it. What we weren't told at that time was that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the city is paying the electric bill, it's paying the gas bill. There's been no water, sewage, or garbage charged, building insurance, phone DSL, bathroom supplies, cleaning supplies, cleaning costs, snow removal, lawn care, building improvements. I've read this contract ten times. Not once does it say in here that we would be paying for any of this stuff. And by paying for any of this stuff, it's coming directly out of our residents' pocket. Comes right from taxes. I don't know why it was set up that way. There's nothing in here that says that. Now, I have been told that the building was donated back to the city. In this, in the purchase agreement contract, it says seller will retain ownership of the streets, curb, sidewalks, potable water system to the curb stop, sanitary sewer system to the curb stop, storm sewer, and, and here's the key thing in here, which is probably the gray zone, outlots A, B, C, and D. Outlet C has got the community center on it. The question is, since it's not mentioned anywhere else in the purchase agreement, if the city owned or had that property in foreclosure, it was never owned by anybody else except the city, because it wasn't included in the purchase agreement. So my question is, basically, if this is true, why are we paying all these bills? This is not fair for the residents to inquire these bills, or even have as a burden. Second, who owned the building? In the purchase agreement, it says outlot C. Outlet C is defined as the community center on it. So that alone, sitting here doing your job as a councilman, watching over the checkbook for the city, and this is my money too, why am I paying this bill? Whereas it says the city has to pay this bill, and we've been doing this for twenty-two years? I believe our residents need some explanation to some of this stuff. I would certainly like to have my business funded. But I didn't go through it like that. Why is there a sign out in front of a building that's owned by the city? I believe you have to go through a set of, what, applying for it? Was it applied for? Why is it there? And how long is this going to really go on? How many years does it take a developer to do a development? We're sitting on twenty-two years of city-paid bills. One thing it says in the purchase agreement also is in section three dash four, all expenses in order to develop this real property shall be paid for by the purchaser.
Mr. Mayor, I had a brief conversation with Mr. Mundell Senior at the last meeting, and said we would be having a work session here, and wanted to invite him, make sure he was going to be in attendance. And I don't know if you'd want him to say a few words, or speak to some of this, perhaps there's some questions he can answer.
I don't know either. I think this, this kind of gets to your point of why we need a third party who has no dog in the fight, you know? We have an obligation to look out for the residents' money. Brian, Brian Senior and Junior have a, a business interest involved here. We're all, you know, we're all, we have a position, if you will. Whereas the Attorney General doesn't have a dog in the fight one way or the other. It's just, what does the agreement say? What's okay, what isn't? Like signs, I mean, is it, is that conformed to your zoning and all that kind of stuff? You know, things like that, and they can just sort it out. Whereas, whereas we, we're all biased in one way or another. Did you have anything to throw in, Jim?
I have the same concerns as Tim, because I've been contacted with residents too. And not only that is, I have a question, is water and sewer bills aren't so high up there, and I don't understand why. Just for an example, when we had, last year when they were assessing everybody's taxes, the majority of the list was out of Whispering Aspen. I think there was five or seven out of Viking Preserve. So I mean, that's telling me, I mean, anywhere from two hundred plus a month, I've heard. And some people can't afford that, and I don't know why it's that way. Why is it just that development?
I can't answer that question.
I don't know either. That's what I'm trying to figure out, too. It just seems like the residents have been paying dearly for this development for twenty-some years.
But again, we get back to, that's why it just keeps dragging out, is because it's, it's a back and forth without resolution. If we want a resolution, one way or the other, however it falls, it's the way it falls, you have to have a dispassionate third party involved. That's why judges exist. They're dispassionate third parties. They don't, they're not personally involved in the cases. If they are, they recuse themselves, just like Brian properly did. He's, he's, he's involved, so he can't, you know? So I think that's really, if we want to resolve it, and I do, I do, I don't, I mean, that's just how I live my life. I don't like things hanging out forever. I want to resolve it, whether I like how they turn out or not. I'd rather have resolution than just dragging stuff on forever. It's just pointless to me. This is my personal perspective on it. So to that...
There's got to be a resolve, I mean...
Yeah, so to that question, do we want to give Matt the feedback that we do want to pursue or not, or is there another alternative?
Otherwise, social media...
Oh, forget about social media.
You don't have to tell the truth out there. You can just put anything out there. And it has been.
And we've got residents fighting with residents. I mean, this is something that just needs to be addressed.
Way to address anything. Yeah, it's just... No, I was very disheartened to see that show up. Especially at this time, a time of year with an election pending and all that. It's just like, you know, it's really easy to be a fire bomber when you don't have any stake in how things turn out, you know? And all it does is make a mess, and I was pretty disappointed about that. But anyway, do we want to provide direction to our city administrator to pursue the avenue we described? Which is to contact the Attorney General's office and have them review the case, and they'll take statements of facts. I'm sure there'll be depositions and all that kind of stuff, and take it out of the court of public opinion, take it out of the court of involved parties, and put it in the hands of someone who's doesn't, doesn't have a vested interest one way or the other.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It's the only way, well, it's the only way we're going to get resolution.
There's questions, put them, put them to the city administrator, if anybody's got questions.
Yeah. Yeah, not just us, but the Mundels and, you know, but it's, it's like, it's time. Let's, let's just deal with it one way or the other, but come to a resolution, and live in peace together. Both parties say, okay, however it turns out, we agree, it's settled. So we can stop gnashing about that one, and we can pick a new one. Okay, well, I guess that resolves item two.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll contact our attorney then and have him draft up a letter. If you have, independently have questions, forward them to me. We'll try and weave that into the letter. We can provide everyone with a copy of that letter before it goes out, to get the blessing on that, and then, and then I'm not sure what a turnaround time is on, on, you know, their office reviewing it.
No idea.
And to your point, I don't know what steps they take, if it's read the contract and make a determination, or if it's depositions, or...
Well, they're going to have to get a statement of facts, to know what the facts are and contrast. That's the letter of the law versus the intent of the law thing I was mentioning. So you gotta, you gotta take a statement of facts, gotta depose people, and they're not going to depose everybody on what's up in East Bethel, I can assure you. If you're not an involved party, keep your trap shut. You know, that's going to be their attitude. You know, if you want to boil it down to simple facts, not a bunch of opining. Okay, item three, mayor and council compensation. So did you folks figure out the answers to the questions, two questions we had? One was, when was the last time there was an increase in the city council members' compensation, as well as the commission members' compensation, and how do we compare with adjacent communities? Ham Lake, Oak Grove, St. Francis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did do some research on this. I think the original compensation started in ninety-four, and they were changed in October nineteenth of two thousand and five, so approximately eleven years later. And, and in terms of how you compare to other communities, you're in the ballpark with what salaries are for other communities. What I will say is that...
Do you have a list of the results you got?
I don't recall if we've compiled that, okay? The, you know, first of all, I, I think the, the best statement is, no one does this for the money. But I think you, you said that earlier. But there, even with adding work sessions to the agendas now, it's kind of increased workload and that sort of thing. So there could be an argument for an increase.
And in all honesty, there were work sessions back in the day, too.
Okay.
In twenty-ten and all that, they had work sessions, not as often as we do, but they had...
There's always work sessions, and it wasn't uncommon to have one once a month.
Okay.
So at any rate, it's, what I will say from a budget standpoint is, you'll be hearing from Mike tonight, but we have included the increase in the budget. That doesn't mean you have to go with that. But we wanted to provide you, you know, in the, in the September here, when we're establishing the preliminary budget, you can set a high point, but you can't go any high, any higher than that. You can go lower than that, to confirm that in December. But, but that would be your worst-case scenario, shall we say, in terms of adding that in there. Again, I want to reiterate that it's not added in for any purpose to, you know, trump a decision here tonight. It's just in there in case a decision is made.
As a placeholder.
Right, as a placeholder. And so, you know, this is, I, I think one of the challenges that, that city councils face, and certainly commissions, is, is that of time and, and time commitment. And so I recall when I was serving on Ramsey City Council, they, they discussed, you know, increases because the cost of babysitting, some people needed babysitters, had gone up dramatically. And so to try and compensate for some of that, or compensate for fuel, or cost of operating vehicle, all those things go up in time. And, and those are arguments for it. There is, you know, arguments against it too, I guess, from the standpoint of, you know, some people get upset at, at increases. So it's, it's really, it really boils down to a policy decision of what you guys want to do. And if it's, and you seem to be kind of on a every ten years, there's an increase type of thing.
So you're thinking we're two increases behind at this point. It's been nineteen years since the last one.
Right. So, so there hasn't, there hasn't been a, an increase for quite a while. But I'll read these off if you'd like me to, the neighboring communities, okay? Andover mayor is twelve thousand dollars a year, council members are ten thousand dollars a year. They have two city council meetings a month, workshop ten months of the year. EDA meeting once a month, and HRA meeting, one HRA meeting per year. Cambridge mayor is seventy-five hundred per year, council members are fifty-six hundred per year. Two council meetings a month, and a handful of special meetings. Ham Lake mayor is six thousand dollars a year, council members are forty-nine hundred dollars per year, and they have two council meetings a month. Asani mayor is fifty dollars per meeting, council members are fifty dollars per meeting, they have two council meetings per month. Oak Grove mayor is sixty-two ninety per year, council members are fifty-five forty per year, with two council meetings per month. St. Francis, it's thirty-five dollars for four hours or less, seventy dollars for more than four hours for the mayor. Council members are thirty-five dollars for four hours or less, and seventy dollars for four hours or more.
It's kind of a weird system, isn't it?
Yeah, Wyoming is, the mayor is five thousand, council members are four thousand, and two council meetings per month. I think each community kind of decides how they want to handle it. I don't know that there's a right or wrong answer to any of it. But, but I, you know, I think if you're trying to compensate a little bit for time, that might be one of the basis for establishing, you know, the, the salary, if you will.
Well, I'm going to combine three and four, because, and, and I'm not pandering by saying this, okay? This is not election-year pandering. But I think the, the priority would, would start with the commissions, in my opinion. Because I think they should be doubled. If you're going to give an average of two hours per month to a meeting, plus another hour to two hours of prep, getting forty dollars is not like you're overpaid or anything, and right now they get twenty. And that's, you know, again, you get back to, you know, you have to actually think to be on the planning commission, and parks commission, and stuff, you have to digest information. And so I think it's, I would say that would be the highest priority, because I take your point, we seem, we do seem to be in the middle. I could make a joke about that, but I won't. But, but I would say that the commissions really need to be doubled to forty dollars. For attendees, if you're attending, you know?
I'd agree with the commissions.
Yeah. Yeah, because it, it takes at least three hours a month to be on the planning commission or parks commission. I'm forgetting one. What is it? It's not the EDA, it's not the HRA. There's something else, too, isn't there?
Well, fire liaison, there's...
Well, yeah, the liaisons, too. I figure on average, and I, it's probably just my over, overdoing it nature, but I figure conservatively forty hours a month to do the mayor's work, conservatively.
I'll comment on that. I used to... Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll comment on that, I used to, I still do somewhat recruit candidates, um, at least in the city I, I, um. I live in and, and one of the main questions is, how much time is involved here, you know, how much time, and I. And I jokingly say it's, uh, it's two meetings a month, not that big a deal. The reality is, is that, um, if you're gonna do your job. Reviewing your packet ahead of time, going and visiting, you know, perhaps areas where they're asking for, uh, you know, um. Any sort of account, you know, accommodation from the council in terms of decisions or anything like that. Then, uh, you're spending a significant amount of time.
Yeah.
And, uh, and it does wear on the family, there's no question about that. When I served on Ramsey City Council, it wore on my family, so I speak from personal experience, but, and that's, and, and I attribute it somewhat to college. In that, do you want the A or do you want the C, it's your choice. You know, the A is gonna take a lot more time than the C.
Well, it's just like the election judges, you know. You don't wanna be abusive, you know, take advantage of people because they have patriotism and want their election system to run well, so gee, we don't have to pay them anything, you know. Well, that's, that's not being, that's not honest dealing, you know. That's not honest dealing, you, you pay for the, the value of the work. You know, and, and election judging is important. It's, that's the key to election integrity is the, is the judging. And, uh, same with the commissioners, we count on them to do a lot of the work, we have to do it as well, we have to. I, I watch every planning commission meeting and, you know, Tim's at the park commission meeting and. You know, uh. It does take a lot of time if you wanna do it well, you know, if you wanna slough off, I suppose, like anything in life, you can slough off, but. You know, if you're gonna be here and spend the time, it seems this is, it's seen, always seemed to me easier to just do the work than it is to pretend to be doing the work. Actually always seemed harder to me than just doing the work, you know, in anything I ever did in life. But I think we're in agreement that, that we'd like to see some kind of a resolution proposal to increase the. Commissions to double their stipend, and we seem to be in a consensus for that. And what do you guys think about the, the city council members?
I don't know, it sounds like we're pretty much in the middle.
Yeah.
It really does.
I had sixty-three hundred for mayor, fifty-seven hundred for council. Uh, we're right in the area of all the other communities.
I agree.
So, and I would agree with commissions, they can put a lot of time in and have to deal with a lot.
There's also the, the aspect of site visits too. We don't just take the written stuff and, we go out, we do and they do, go out and visit the sites. And so, you can only get so much from a paper and a description, a plat, whatever, they go out and they look at the sites and all you've got, driving time and cost of fuel and all that. It's, it, you know, it's not, it's not a, it's not work for people who just wanna coast, you know. Certainly, certainly don't need those kind of people on the commissions. So, I think that's fair.
And I would say too, that probably these, you know, this is a snapshot of time today, I would say these are, as everyone's been in budget discussions, these are probably. Topics of discussion as well for, for other cities, so. If you were to approve an increase, I would say you'd probably be, you know, um. Others would be probably talking the same sort of conversation right now as well, so.
And we're, we populate the HRA, the Housing Area Development Authority, but the same should apply to the EDA as well. As long as it's in, constituted the way it is with non-council members on it. Does that kind of cover that?
So do you want, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, commissions for sure, mayor council stays the same, or?
Yeah, I think.
I think, I think we have to for now.
Okay. Alrighty.
I wanna leave enough time for the White Pines rental presentation.
Okay. Okay, that settles that, um. Somebody's phone is interfering with the, uh, mic, so I'm not sure if it's too close or something else, I don't know.
It might have been mine, mine was.
Might have been mine. Does that help?
Are we getting feedback?
Little clicking sound, I wasn't sure if it was our camera that was misbehaving. Okay, uh, Mr., Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is White Pines rental presentation, this is, um, a topic that we've brought before you in the past. And been talked about, I know the applicants wanted to make a presentation on this, uh, so you'd have more information as it relates to what they're thinking. And, uh, I had Aaron pull together some information as well, as it relates to what it might take to do something like this in our community in terms of ordinances and. And, um, and everything else that, that might provide, might be a, a little bit of a conflict, but at any rate, um. I don't know if the applicants are here, okay, um, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you and you can proceed.
Come on up to the mic and introduce yourselves and.
My name is Pete Dimmich, me and my wife Maria own White Pines, own White Pines General Store. And, you know, we own that, plus we own a parcel land right next to us, that's Zoned B1 Limited. You know, the store's been in the community for a very long time, um, it's a part of the community and, um. You know, we're just looking for ways to try to. Increase some revenue for us, because basically where we're located, there's not necessarily enough support from the community to. You know, make. Make it profitable enough, um, as far as a business, but yet, it's, um. A service to the community and even people all around the lake, because it's, you know, we carry a lot of different things that they may need in an emergency or whatnot. So, that being said. We've got this other pro, piece of property and Pete Benacasa here, um, who lives in the community too, he has worked with. Some of these type of developments like we're talking about, as far as the rental part, what we wanna do with that land, so with this. For that, I would let Pete discuss kind of and lay out what he's thinking and what I thought is, and I know. From the, when you brought it up, Aaron, that some of the things that we wanted to do aren't necessarily. Allowed for the ordinance, but we wanted to give you a more in-depth explanation of what the project would involve.
Aaron, can you bring that up on GIS?
I have it, uh.
Do you happen to have any visuals, like a layout or anything?
No, what, uh, I live right down the road from him and, uh, so I know Pete.
What, what, I live out, kinda like, so.
I live on the corner of, uh, Lake Shore and Lincoln.
Okay.
And so, anyway, uh, I do large scale.
Is that in Mike's old house? In Mike's old house across from the community center?
No, I live in, uh, the.
Gail's old house, I think.
Gail's old house on the corner of Lincoln and Lake Shore.
Great big house.
Gail Murphy's.
You stay have all the art in the yard.
Oh, that way, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of Forest, sorry.
Yeah, anyway, I've, uh, done a lot of development and so, I, I was also working with him to try to refinance the loan there. And he's, it's such a small. Volume of income coming in there, it really doesn't fit in the categories where you, you know, get benefits through SBA or any kind of conforming loan program. So, he's got a parcel next to him and then there's another one that's connected to that that a neighbor wants to sell. So he's got a hundred and forty feet of frontage.
Is that Harvey's or is that the Otrumba?
This one right here is what we own, a hundred by a hundred.
Right, and the one right below it is the one.
Forty by a hundred.
Is that Otrumba?
Yes.
Yeah, Har- Harvey?
I talked to Harvey and we, when I was telling him kind of what we were thinking, he, they were looking at selling it, he would be willing to sell that to us, so. We could conceivably have a hundred and forty by a hundred piece of property to do what we wanna do.
So we're just looking at like a three hundred and twenty square foot cabin, slab on grade, you know, and, uh.
Oh, so you've moved away from the, the tiny homes or whatever you talked about before?
Well, you, you know, they're not for residents or someone to move in there and have an address, a lot of people in the neighborhood have company and people over and there's a lot of small houses in the neighborhood. They're always getting on Facebook, looking for places where their friends can stay, yeah, and not only that, you've got ice fishing and. And traffic all year round, coming up and down Lincoln there, so.
Have you talked to the neighbors?
Yeah, I don't think any of the neighbors really.
Some of the people I've, I have, I've kept it kind of quiet because in our neighborhood, I mean, no matter what you do, if you're gonna make a change or something. There's gonna be people that.
Next thing you know, it's on Facebook, right?
Exactly, there's, you're, you're, you'll never make everybody happy.
Yeah.
But a few of the people I've mentioned it to. Think it's a good idea, or they're just like, it doesn't really matter what I think, you gotta do what you gotta do to, you know, keep your business afloat and, you know. Make a profit, so, I mean, a lot of people are just indifferent, some people will probably complain, but. You know, it's like, well, like Pete can explain kind of the layout, but yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking you can get six cabins in there, he's got about a sixty-plus foot setback on the store from the frontage of Lincoln. And you can run a driveway on both sides of the parcel. And he has ample part, he has more parking than he needs already, and he's got parking on the side. And then there's an extra lot across from, uh, Smokey's is right there too, that restaurant kitty corner, so it's, you know, it's kind of a commercial area. But, there's not much you can do, I mean, nobody's gonna build a house there, he's not gonna build another commercial building.
Why not, why not build a house there?
Well, it's zone.
So you'd have to get a variance or.
We'd have to be change a residential, which, when we first, that was our first.
Is that both Harvey's lot as well as?
I don't know what Harvey's is owned right now, that one's B1 Limited, 'cause when we bought the store, we lived in Crystal. We now live in the community up on, over on Hawthorne, but we, our thought was to build a house on that property right next to the store and. Win-win, right? Because according to the county, that lot is zone residential, well, the city has its own, it's B1 Limited.
Opposite of the county.
So, and I was told that supersedes the county, so.
Oh, why don't we, have, have you, you've had the conversation of just changing the zoning so you could build a home?
Well, this is about three years ago, and they said, you know, it'd be a tough sale for the city council because, um. There's only five B1 Limited. Or zone parcels in East Bethel, four of them are already developed, that's the only undeveloped one.
What makes it B1 Limited, Aaron, can you?
It's our zoning code, the city zoning code, so.
What does, what does B1 Limited mean?
It doesn't allow much.
It, it's a, it's a, it's a small list of business opportunities that service a smaller community, so. Exactly what the general store is doing right now, convenience store, correct. And the underlying.
Can I ask you a question, I'm, I'm sorry, Aaron.
It's okay, go ahead.
What, what prevents you from having a liquor store or getting a liquor license in that store, I'm just curious, 'cause the amount of drinking that occurs. Over the years has occurred in that community.
It makes sense, I mean, those drive gold cars and everything, those.
Yeah, I know.
Liquor store. That is.
Smokey says it.
Smokey does, Smokey does have off sale.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
Right, oh, I know, I know.
I went in there the other day after a motorcycle ride and paid six dollars for a twelve ounce bottle of beer, I mean.
Yeah, but when you, I did a little bit of research too with, 'cause we've got a couple of the beer distributors that service Smokey's, 'cause we get some like crack sodas from them. Because we don't sell any liquor at all, but I asked them about that and the annual profit margins on a liquor store aren't. That great, it's based on volume, you have to sell volume to make money doing it, again, we're gonna be, if we did a liquor store, we could carry a lot less stuff, basically what the people in the community. Would drink, but still, you would need the volume to actually make a profit, well, for us to do another business loan, build a liquor store and then. That has to be. Have an employee plus the store, it's like.
Yeah.
The, the cost would outweigh the potential profit, whereas with doing this, it'd be like a resort type or just a cabin rental for like a week or three days. Like the community center in the community, uh, they are, they rent, they do weddings, a lot of weddings, and.
My daughter's wedding occurred there, yeah.
And they have guests that come into Motte Town too, well, they have to drive to Forest Lake or Plain and stay at a hotel if they're coming from Motte Town. Wouldn't it be great if somebody wanted a family reunion or something at the community center or wedding and their guests could rent a cabin two blocks away? And like I said, that's all it would be, it's not gonna be long-term rental, um, it'd be, like I said, more of a resort. And then like you guys know, Coon Lake is a very big ice fishing lake, so. You've got people who would come up there, that may come up there daily, you know, drive up to fish where if they wanna do a fishing weekend, if they had a place to stay. You know, they rent it for a hundred bucks a night or whatever, then you just hit the lake, you know, the whole weekend. Things like that, so there's some definite pluses, and it would also help us, 'cause of course the people there would also, you know. Hit the store for, um, groceries and things like that, they would be, because it's right there, so. And I don't think it's really gonna increase, it wouldn't necessarily increase traffic, you know, to the point any, it, it wouldn't have.
Well, it does raise the question of where are they gonna park? I mean, I, I mean, everybody's gonna have a car.
Square foot cabin, so if our, if two people are in there, it's probably.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked about the layout thing, is because we could see the spaces involved, you know.
Yeah, so it'd be six carts, there'd be one per driveway, I mean, even if two people go there, they probably ride together, I guess. And, uh, you know, there's, there's camper hookups and cabins all over Bethel side, going down, all the way, you know, where John Swisher lives. Back in there across from me, there's, I don't know, four or five cabins that are still being used.
Over on Hawthorne?
No, right across.
Oh, you're on Hawthorne?
I'm on Hawthorne.
Oh, you're on that.
Yeah, I'm talking about on Lincoln.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mary's house has been there for what, sixty years?
A long time.
Yeah, Danny's, Danny's now.
They've got like, I don't know, three cabins there plus.
All over on, yeah, Aspen and all that.
Other camper that stays there.
So, that's really, you know, I, I don't know, and so we would need to know, you know, if it's something that you guys would consider. And then, would it be, would you really need to change a code that much, or, you know?
Well, let's turn our attention to the gatekeeper known as Mr. Burke. Now, when it comes, when it comes to, uh. Uh, zoning in East Bethel, I, I think you're right there with Craig Yocum about which of you knows the most about it, I mean, Craig's been doing it thirty years. Out here with, he's a city engineer, uh, but Aaron is very well acquainted with the zoning. So, but what are your thoughts, yours and Matt's, of course?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, I, uh, first, when I hear the word cabin, I don't think of, um, something that's maybe, uh, on wheels. But when I think tiny home or, um, park model, I immediately think of something on wheels that's brought in, that's temporary, or similar to a mobile home or a manufactured home.
These are stick built, right?
Yes, and they're, uh, they're bolted to the slab upgrade.
Does it, it comes in on wheels however, like a park model?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're still sick built on.
Cabin, they bring it, it's preset, you set all your bolts and they just bring them in and set it down.
J-volts?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the problem is then, uh, zoning, obviously, as we discussed before, this is a business zone. That would be semi-sort of a residential use, however, short-term rental, we don't have a short-term rental ordinance, we don't have short-term rental inspections, we don't have short-term rental fees. There are a lot of things in the zoning code that we would need to take a look at to determine, is this feasible for the city? Uh, number two, cluster septic systems, we have nothing in our, in our ordinance about cluster septic systems, so if there's six cabins here. We're gonna need a, um, commercial septic design that could be approved by, uh, the, uh. Engineer that we use, or the building inspector that we use, that we just initiated that contract with over in, uh, Forest Lake or Wyoming to. See if that could even be handled on a lot that's only a little over a quarter of an acre.
The one is working on the Cedarwood situation, that one?
Uh, no, no, uh, we, you guys passed a resolution to allow us to use, I think it's Wyoming's, uh, septic inspector, because he's got certification for.
But I thought that was, that's what he was working on with Cedarwood.
Uh, we just, I, I think we brought him on just as a, um, option for future commercial septics.
Okay.
So, now what would this?
Is that what you anticipated was a cluster septic? Is that what you anticipated, was it cluster septic situation or one?
Well, you know, most of the larger houses in there have four or five baths, I mean, this is six, so. And it's gonna be, you know, the, the use there, you're not gonna have...
It's not gonna be a thousand or fifteen...
However, our zoning code allows for one residence per parcel per septic system, not six individuals into one system. We don't have a cluster system designed in our ordinance.
You don't have a shared system?
Correct.
Yeah, but it, it can work if, if you, uh...
And then if we talk, if we talk setbacks, we don't know where these are gonna be placed or how far they need to be from property lines, how far this cluster, how big this cluster system is gonna need to be, and will that meet setback guidelines? And then, uh, will each one have a parking space, will each one, like, are architectural standards? Uh, there's, there's a lot of things that will have to be explored based on what plan is presented. Um, in the B1 zone, uh, we require by ordinance that the minimum acreage for a multifamily structure be three acres without sewer and water. This is a little over a quarter of an acre. So if we were gonna do a planned unit development, which is required by the B1 code, the underlying zoning says it has to be three acres, this is just over a quarter of an acre. So we've got a hurdle to take care of in that scenario as well.
A lot of hurdles.
I know there are, there, you do have a recreational zoning in, in East Bethel.
For a campground.
For a campground, right.
This is not a campground.
But that's basically...
This is, this is now a business, a short-term rental business.
Which is what a campground is basically, it's very similar. It's gonna be, you know, you go to any campground, you can rent a tent site, you can rent a cabin, or you can rent...
Now you see, now you see, Pete, why this is gonna be a lot more complex than just, what is it? Is it a campground, is it a, is it a multi-unit business? Is it a, we're gonna have to define that in our code, which doesn't exist right now.
So, some things that I wanted to bring up, the reason we didn't come in with a drawing, 'cause this is the reason.
Right.
They can be attached, they can be back-to-back, so whatever the setbacks need to be. Once we know what your compliance is, I can give it to the engineer to design. So, we just need to know if you are open any kind of approval of that, and if you are, what are the requirements, and then we'll draw it up and show it to you.
And the other thing, the reason, one thing we decided was like the shared set, because it would be less expensive. But I mean, if we can't get that done, if we need to, if we need to do, and, you know, holding tank for each of the cabins or something. I mean, whatever, I mean, we just need to know what you guys require of us to make that...
You know who I'd like to ask for their opinion is the person I believe in this room who's lived the longest on Coon Lake Beach or close to it, and that would be Mr. DeRoche right here. What are your thoughts about, about?
Not enough information.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm kind of in that camp too, I was hoping for some kind of a layout, but, uh, anyway...
It's hard to do, because like...
I know, it's a dog chasing its tail, I, I get it, yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
But we do have, Pete's got engineers and that he works with that could do the layout, but you know...
Yeah, I mean, you gotta start somewhere.
A few thousand dollars to, you know, layout, which we can, but if it's even a non-starter, if it's something you guys wouldn't even consider...
Well, I mean, just, that's why I asked for Aaron's input, it's a, it's a lot of hurdles, you know? It's a lot of moving parts. Brian, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, right now, there's a whole mess of unanswered questions.
Yeah.
That, uh, but it, it would be, my guess is a long process to wade through everything, get it right. That's kinda what I'm seeing. I, I like the idea of it, eh, eh, but how realistic would it be for the city to get through everything in a timely manner? What, when are you thinking, or when would you like to start this venture?
Well, it'd happen this year. If it's next year, I mean, next year would be great, which would give us, you know, six, eight months here to get all, you know, get all, everything figured out, to lay out what you guys would allow, what you wouldn't. You know, things like that. I mean, it's not so weird, we knew it wouldn't happen this year, we knew it's not gonna be a quick thing. But, you know, we think it could be long-term viable and a good, a good fit, um, especially where we're located right now with on Coon Lake. Um, so, future, you know, it would be more valuable too, as far as write property taxes and, um, for sale at a liquor gate too, you know? So, I mean, I'd best...
I'll bet you you've heard this, it's inconsistent with the character of Coon Lake, of Coon Lake Beach.
It is, and those are the people that...
I've lived out there twenty-eight and a half years, but, but I've been there for what, forty-three?
Forty-one.
Forty-one? And it's just, but, you know, that's the way people are, they wanna, they wanna see what they've seen for a long time, you know?
Exactly.
I understand.
We make a little tweet to the store and you diss off somebody, because they don't totally...
I think your store looks great, yeah.
I think so too, but there are people that still complain, so...
No, I think you've done a great job with the space that you have.
Thank you. So that's kind of where we're at. So if it's something you guys would be open to, you know, maybe we could work more with Aaron or whoever to...
What's your perspective on what, what's the next step? What is, what does who need to do to move this forward, one way or the other?
Well, we need a city planner that can start doing some research on what other cities have done.
Well, in the meantime, you're the city planner, so now...
I'm gonna have to, I'll have to do some research and see what other cities have done. Obviously, cabin country, lakes up north, Brainerd, um, they've, they've obviously accomplished this in some form or fashion. Um, but I'm, I'm gonna tell you it's gonna take an extensive overhaul or a complete rewrite or a write of a section for short-term rental, and how we can even make that accomplished based on one case.
Even with a city planner, yeah.
With, with or without a city planner, based on one case of less than a quarter acre or a quarter acre piece of property, so...
Are there state statutes that would...
Apply? Yes, and that has to do with, uh, lodging tax.
Well, with anything as far as being within the thousand feet from the lake, it's Sherland Overland District?
Twenty-five percent coverage. There's a lot of, a lot of questions that would have to be answered based on what their proposal might be.
Yeah. Okay, well, guys, we're gonna have to button it up pretty quick.
Just one last statement, writing this, uh, we, it wouldn't just be applac, applicable to you, it has to be universal over the entire city. That's one of the hard parts about writing code.
Right. I get that. And I just didn't know if it could be switched from B1 limited to recreational.
Oh, it, it wouldn't matter which zoning, yeah, it wouldn't matter.
That's what I, that's what we're here for, is kind of...
Yeah, you're feeling it out, we, we get it.
One last question, is it more feasible to talk about a change for a single-family dwelling there? If you wanted to put a personal asset?
I would think so, yeah.
Yes, that's a much easier process.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because I asked for a list of what's allowed in B1, and it was like three things, and not only feasible for that corner.
Yeah.
So... I think it's great that you're expanding or want to expand your business.
Thank you. All right, all right, we appreciate it, thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Being said, I'm gonna adjourn.
Yeah. We'll adjourn the work meeting and get ready for the regular city council meeting.